All right, well, welcome everyone. We are here together on January 27th, 2021. This is a special meeting of the Kingston Police Commission. We are here today to discuss a variety of policies that need our approval. We'll talk a little bit more about why and where this project came from in a moment. But before we get started, being that this is not a regular meeting, we won't have any minutes or anything to approve this time. I will hold all of that till next meeting. But I will just make sure that we take attendance. We do have in attendance today Commissioner Dejeanette, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Mapes, Commissioner Bodwin. And I think that's all of us. And also want to thank Chief Tinty and Lieutenant Bonds for being to help answer any questions that we may have, you know, as we go forward with this initiative. So I think a little bit of background that I can start. And then the chief or Lieutenant Bonds, you can fill in the gaps. But at this point, well over a year ago, the City of Kingston Common Council authorized funding for the police department to do a comprehensive review of all of their policies and practices related to policing. The City of Kingston hired a company called Lexipol to be able to review all of our policies and to be able to make sure that our policies were not only in a format that were readable and understandable, but also to make sure that they complied with not only, you know, state, local, and federal standards, but also to make sure that they, you know, were kind of the best practices, you know, based on all of the research that has been done out there in the criminal justice world. And so that's, I think, the history of, you know, kind of how we got started. And I'll throw it to the chief or the lieutenant to talk about, you know, what the Lexipol process was like, just so that all of our commissioners understand kind of, you know, from day one, you know, what happened during this process? What was reviewed? And, you know, how did we get to kind of where we are today?
Yeah, I'm going to throw it right over to Mike at the beginning of this because he really was the program manager on all this, right? Mike, you dealt with directly with Lexipol. If you wouldn't mind just giving a quick overview from the beginning and why we chose them. I think for perspective of the police department, I can speak from just what I've seen, what I've been part of. They have been phenomenal to work with, great company. So go ahead, Mike.
So a part of the choice for Lexipol was driven from our need to, like the mayor said, make sure that the policies and procedures were updated, maintaining accreditation standards. And a lot of work goes into making sure that all the policies are up to date, particularly when it comes to changes in case law and statutes. And Lexipol offered that service. As we were looking around at potential vendors or avenues, they really jumped out when Chief Mike Ranali, who is an instructor for the state for DCJS, a former police chief and is really, he wrote the book on search and seizure in New York State, like literally wrote the book. And he became the person, the New York representative to Lexipol. And his legal advice and guidance in developing the New York State manual was really critical. So that was a big help for us. The other side of it is maintaining accreditation standards. And there are, you know, 110 standards, which all require policy, procedure, and documentation. And Lexipol has a module not only to ensure that we meet all the accreditation standards, but also creates a virtual place for all those policies to exist. And the difference in like time consumption, that when a policy gets updated for the policy manual itself, those changes will be reflected instantly in the accreditation files, which really cuts down on the duplication of work. Where before we would have to go back and redo the policy and then also go back and make sure any affected files were changed and updated. So that was another consideration. As far as getting us to the manual, the procedure part of it, Lexipol provides a sample manual with best practices. They have one specific to New York State, which is obviously the one that we were tied into. The City of Poughkeepsie Police, Ulster County Sheriff is in the process. There's several local agencies that are also going to Lexipol as their primary policy and procedure management company. So, you know, we weren't alone in this, in this choice. But kind of to get us there, what we needed to do was look at our existing policies and procedures, which were pretty robust, considering we've been accredited since 1990. And we have, you know, 30 years worth of policies developed that were part of that manual. So what we did is we started by looking at all of the Lexipol policies themselves. And any place where the Lexipol program had the same policy that we already had in existence, or the same title of a policy, we would work with the program manager from Lexipol to find the commonalities, look at any potential differences and any of the updates. And in an effort to do that, on a weekly basis, I would meet with the program manager. We would select between five and 10 policies. And I would disseminate them to the rest of the command staff. We would look at each of them individually. And then every week after our command staff meeting, we would do a policy review meeting. And collectively, we would discuss all of the five policies that were on the table for the week. If we needed subject matter experts, we would bring them in when it got involved in say either domestic violence or critical incident stress management or the CIT, that's, you know, something that we put a lot of time into. We have in-house instructors that teach those things. So we would, you know, look at them as SMEs and bring them into the discussion as well. So after the command staff met, looked at any potential revisions, we would then meet, I would meet with the program manager from Lexipol, discuss our concerns or our request changes or what we needed updated. And the two of us would work through that process to come up with the new policy side of it. And just to kind of be clear, because I know we're in policy review with regard to this meeting, I think it's important to look at, there's, when it comes to policies, procedures, and how things get done, there's really three facets of it. The first being policy, the next being procedure, which is slightly different than policy, but certainly related to it. And then the training material to support that policy and procedure. So just as kind of a real quick goofy example of it would be, if we talk about, the police agency has to have a policy that we respond to bank robberies. You know, so the policy would state that we respond to bank robberies, that we receive the call, and, you know, that we would, you know, be certain to, you know, swiftly and safely carry out that mission. But then we would have a set of procedures to say how we were going to do that. Meaning, you know, where are we going to park the cars? What are the code words we're going to share with the tellers? What are we going to do on approach to the bank? So that would fall on the procedure side of the house. And then in an effort to prepare our officers for responding to a bank robbery, the third component would be the training. And the training material would be supportive of the policy and procedure, but offer specific examples of if this happened, this is what we would do. Here are some considerations. Here's how you would respond if, you know, there was a problem at the exterior, the interior, whatever it may be. So I think it's important as we look at policy to clarify that there are those kind of three facets, that a policy in and of itself is not going to encompass all of the procedures, just as the training material and all of the what ifs are not necessarily going to be covered in the procedure or the policy. They all support one another. And I think that's, that's important. And I use the bank robbery example because, you know, we're going to make our policies are something that will be of public viewing, right? You know, the policy that we're going to respond to bank robberies is something the public ought to know. However, we wouldn't necessarily post procedural material so that people know this is how we're going to respond to the bank robbery, because that incorporates safety issues for the people that work in the bank and the officers responding. So as we went through this process, we finished all the policies first. Those are all done at this point. We are now went through any extra content, which was, we had material, we had policy and procedure that perhaps Lexipol didn't cover in their material. So then we had to make a decision, is this material we're going to go forward with? Or is this material that we're going to create a new chapter in the policy? Or we're going to create a new section of policy and procedure to do? So we, after we finished the policies, we went through all of the extra content and created the procedure manual. And the next phase of that is, once this gets approved and incorporated, the members will electronically be able to access their policy and procedure. And then in an effort to strengthen the policies and procedures, and really, one of the selling points for Lexipol is they have what's called daily training bulletins. So once the everything is established, the members will be responsible on a monthly basis to log in. There'll be 20 policy and procedure related questions that they'll have to answer. And those questions, if they answer correctly, they'll, you know, be told to answer correctly. If they answer incorrectly, the software will point them to the point in the policy and procedures that they have to read. We re-ask the question to get it right, so to speak. And that reinforcement on a monthly basis and that creation of these daily training bulletins is really, I think, one of the things that set Lexipol apart from any other potential vendors that we looked at. So that's kind of the, how we got there, how we chose them and where we are in the process. And as the chief and the mayor mentioned, we, you know, we selected these high liability policies or these, you know, important policies as, you know, this is the start point as a review. And that's what was offered out to you folks.
Thank you, Lieutenant Bonds, and thank you, Chief, for that. So for our purposes on the commission, you know, we are going to look at these policies today. And as the policy, you know, setting body for the Kingston Police Department, what we would do is, as we go through these policies, and if there are questions, feel free to ask the chief and lieutenant bonds. And then as we, you know, work through them, our goal would be to approve, you know, each of the policies. And so as we go, some of these policies, you know, will be, you know, word for word what was there before. Some have been improved. And, you know, again, our staff will be able to help kind of alert you to some of those areas. And I think that, you know, from my perspective, you know, I don't have a specific order on how you, how we can go through this. I mean, at least in my Google Drive, they're alphabetical order. So I don't know if that works for everybody. And if we want to start there. That work? All right. So the first policy that I've got is our bias-based policing policy. Did anyone have any questions related to that policy that they'd like to ask of the chief or lieutenant bonds today?
I had put a set of questions forward and Lieutenant Bonds actually addressed most of what the answers to those questions would be. There were questions I thought that maybe people who didn't understand the difference between policy and procedure would ask once they see it. Because I understand, once, once we pass the policy manual and once it goes back to Lexipol and they create a full document, they send it back to us, we'll post it, it'll be public. And so some of these questions, I would think people looking at that, not knowing that there's a procedure and training behind it, would might, might look at it and say, why wasn't this addressed? Why is this, why is this wording this way? And so I'm going to ask them, even though I understand that, but just to address that, so that, that, those questions might be answered specifically in that context. So in the case of the bias-based policing question, there's, my question is, in the context, and this would mostly be in procedure, if somebody gets a dispatch call for a person who's been given a description in a neighborhood and that person, they're suspicious and say, and we'll be straight up with this. Oftentimes, there is bias in suspicion of somebody who's African American or brown skin in a neighborhood, especially predominantly white neighborhood. And those calls might be made by somebody that just automatically makes an assumption about that person. And if there's a description of that person coming to dispatch, how much, how far does that description go to every individual that's on call or who assists in that call to make sure that they have as detailed a description of that individual? So they don't end up just grabbing anybody that remotely matches that description. And we had an incident that where we had somebody that had been stopped, that person called and actually spoke at one of our meetings where they had a hoodie, they were running and the suspect in question was wearing a white tank top and was not necessarily matching the same description. So that's why I brought that up is where does that go into? And I would assume now that that would be more procedure of making sure that that information is disseminated to everybody involved in the call. So that was, that was long-winded, but that's my question there to bring out.
Great. And Chief and Mike, do you want to, one of you want to just kind of address that question and kind of, you know, maybe talk about, you know, the, what we try to do at dispatch in terms of descriptions and things like that?
Absolutely. So a lot of times, the information that's provided to us isn't always exceptionally detailed, unfortunately. Tall male, running down the side, you know. Sometimes they come as vague as that. There is an additional policy, 801, that addresses dispatch. So within that itself, there are responsibilities. Dispatch could give as much information and disseminate that information after calls as well. In some cases, and it has been, the individual that calls and gives us the information may have, as you point out, Commissioner, a bias of their own, right? So at that point, what the officers try to do is engage that subject. If they come across someone, in that particular case, they said he was wearing a tank top. The officer saw him and saw he had a hoodie on. Maybe he had the tank top underneath, he wasn't sure. So in cases like that, the officers then just take that information and act on it appropriately, professional, making sure that they try to engage in a manner that is not intrusive. Should it be an innocent person that mind their own business? But dispatch is addressed in one of the other policies. And it does talk about trying to get as much information as possible from the caller when possible.
That's what I was going to just add, that some of the, some of the concerns where it may come up in one particular policy, there are some other overarching policies that the dispatch policy in particular is going to cover several things that may roll over into these other policies as well.
Great. That was the only one I have for that policy.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions related to that policy?
I have a question just on the administration. And I think, Minnie, you had a question on the administration as well in your summary sheet. But my question would be, wouldn't it make sense, patrol lieutenant should review the efforts? And then it looks like reporting to the chief of police, just to make sure there's consistency. Where does the commission's role come in? So if indeed there was some sort of issue, I think it should, the commission should be made aware of it as well. There should be some sort of procedure in place where any, and in all these policies, if indeed there's some sort of violation, the commission's made aware of it or some sort of inconsistency, the commission's made aware of it.
Yeah, I apologize. I had that in a different section. But yeah, that was my question in terms of determining racial bias. And when it comes to someone not actually having direct experience with racial bias, being able to determine correctly whether that incident has involved racial bias. That was, that was my next question. I just thought it was, I realized that it's in the same policy. And that, that was my question.
So you're talking directly about 401.6, right? Is that the section that you're talking about? Okay. So in things like that, the policy is really there to allow the lieutenant, in this case patrol lieutenant, to kind of bring to my attention, anything that should be addressed. And at that point, as we've shown, I would then bring it to the commission and say, there's a hole here, we got to fill this hole. But it really is designed for the lieutenant to kind of look and make sure that anything that they see or he sees on his level is brought to my attention internally. And then I would return, bring it to the commission.
Thank you.
I think to be able, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have, just as we go into this thing and take this task on, and this is more in a general statement, to get a better perspective for all of us, is there a way we can get a master list, Mike, of which policies are being deleted? Which policies are being amended and which policies are remaining unchanged? Just so we kind of know, lay the groundwork?
We'll, we'll get, we'll get a full PDF of all of the, all the policies. In terms of the changes, I have a, like an Excel spreadsheet. It may not make a lot of sense to you, because the one, I guess, kind of difference is going to be, when we look at comparing the existing policy and procedure manual to the new one, the formatting is completely different. So what we won't see is, we won't see any case where the exact heading, the exact policy number, the format from the previous system looks the same. By adopting Lexipol, we have a situation where three or four of our existing policies may fall under one policy for Lexipol. Or another case where we may have one of our robust policies from the past is now three separate policies from Lexipol. The list that I, that I shared, aside from high liability, some of them are clearly weren't high liability, but they were just policies that just simply didn't exist before that I put into here. But I'll certainly get a whole list of all the policies. There's 156 policies in total in the system.
That'd be great. And if, if we see they're deleted, then that would bring the conversation up. We could say, why are they deleted? And you said, well, they're also, they've been encompassed into this one, this one, and that one. But at least it lays the groundwork for us. So we know where, you know, here's where we started and here's where we're going. So helps explain, you know, what we're, what to lay the map out of course.
All right. So I think that that is all we've hearing for this policy. So we're going to go on to the next one, which is community relations. Anyone have any questions? Thoughts on this one?
This, I had a question on this one. It has in blue, crime prevention programs, and there's nothing after that on the last page.
Yes, sir. So the, the blue on the last page, actually, when you're in the software program, that's a hyperlink. So what we've done is, in several of the policies, if there is a corresponding procedure manual section, that that blue hyperlink would bring you to the procedure manual. Or if there's specific, what you'll see in some of the policies, you'll see reference to a form, say a use of force report form or reference to a particular organization that we would report to, say, at the state level. We've embedded all of those hyperlinks into the policy so that when the membership is using this for guidance during their, during their workday, they'll be able to click right to the form they need or right to the procedure they need. So that's it. That's why it's in blue. It's just, just a hyperlink correlation.
All right. If hearing nothing else on this one, we'll move on to the next one. And this is a technically conducted energy device, which I think for most folks would be the TASER policy. Do I have that correct? Anyone have any questions, thoughts on this one? All right. Okay, well, I'll keep on going along here. This is, the next one is policy 419, which is contacts and temporary detentions.
So I had, yes, I did. I'm sorry. I had a question. So this comes down again to the question of training, procedural training. But the, but section F, it says, I'm sorry, the first one was section D. And one of the questions was, presence in a particular area is suspicious, which felt very vague and broad to me, which goes down to that position again of somebody. What does that, what does that actually mean? When is somebody determined suspicious in another neighborhood? And of course, I'm going to go right to, is somebody going to be profiled if they're in a neighborhood that is not predominantly of their culture? And so that's, that, since it only says presence in a particular area suspicious, that was what my question would be, that what qualifies as, and who determines what is, who is suspicious? If that could be clarified.
Well, I don't think the policy was directed at a particular neighborhood. We've been talking about particular areas. It could be hanging out in the parking lot of the DMV building on a Saturday night and the building's closed, no one's around, that type of approach. I know in our discussion, Commissioner, that a lot of this is addressed during training. I'll kind of jump ahead a little bit about the next one without and kind of lump it all together. But an individual who is seen either by an officer, by a member of the public that is wearing, you know, winter clothes in a July time period, at that point, that is considered to be suspicious. Could it be holding something under there, covering something, absolutely criminal behavior possibly? However, officers who then make the approach understand that they also may be coming up on someone who has some emotional disturbance or a mental health issue as well. So the policy itself is, is again broad, but during training specifically, we do address those issues. Mike, if I've missed anything that I jumped in?
Yeah, no, there's actually an entire class just on observation and patrol, that those are, those are part of the discussions in that, in that training block.
So you, as you just addressed my next question, which was just padded clothing in summertime, which can sometimes be used by people who are in homeless community or mental health as a form of guarding. So I just, my question was whether that was taken into account and that was already answered. So thank you. And that's all I have for that policy.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question on that policy. For the section 419.4 regarding pat-down searches, you know, it says that the officer needs to have reasonable, you know, a reason to pat someone down and articulable suspicion. And I'm assuming that means that, excuse me, girls. I'm assuming that means that the, the officer should be able to articulate the reason that he stopped the person. But it doesn't like specifically say that he has to articulate that to the person he's stopping. You know, so in other words, it's saying like, once, once a valid stop has been made. So one of the other policies that I looked at talks about how, I think it's the one for the cars. You know, like if a person is stopped, that the officer should explain to the person why they've been stopped. And so I don't see that here. And I just think that would be also valid. I mean, it says articulable, you know, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't say to me that they have to articulate that. It just says like, it just means to me that if another officer asks, or if it comes out later, you know, the officer has to be able to explain why he stopped the person. But it doesn't, to me, it doesn't specify that the officer should explain to the person, you know, when they're being stopped, at the beginning of the stop, why they're being stopped.
Oh, so part of this one I can speak to. When it comes down to all pat-down searches, everything's governed by the de-bore levels. You know, there's four levels that, there's a, there's a whole training matrix about it. But what you're, what you're describing is something more procedural than policy.
Okay.
So I think that, again, it's, the broad brush is that if we're going to conduct pat-down searches, there has to be, you know, articulate reason, has to be, you know, reasonable suspicion or depending upon, you know, what level they are in the de-bore levels as to whether or not they in fact be able to do that pat-down search. And that, again, all covered, it's, that's why that session references CPL section 14050. That's, that's where that's born from. But I think that's more of a procedural issue than a policy issue.
Well, it just comes up to me because I saw it in another policy that it was specified. So, you know, that I don't see it here.
It refers to CPL 140.5, which is essentially the same language as what the policy is showing. So we're taking that right out of the New York State CPL.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else on this one? Okay, great. We'll move to the next one. And that's extreme risk protection orders.
Okay. So my question on this one, and, and for people to understand it, so my understanding of extreme risk protection order, somebody who is a danger to themselves or others, or determined to be in the past, seeking employment. And if I'm incorrect, please correct me. And then that there was a stipulation saying that they were able to explain themselves or explain the situation. And to me, it just seemed like such an extreme circumstance to be considering hiring somebody after having been in that, being evaluated or having been in an incident that was determined, extreme risk protection, that I just wanted to know why that would still be a consideration for employment.
One, because civil service doesn't have any limitations as to, it's not a criminal conviction. There's no arrest involved. This is just something that's determined by a judge or magistrate, determine if it's a temporary or permanent situation. But there is no guilt or innocence assigned to this and he's not a criminal at all. So certainly doesn't prohibit the commission from, you know, if the individual should ever have one, from asking about it. But, you know, we see them sometimes when order protections are in place for individuals that may have gone through a bad divorce or whatever family situation they may have had at that time. I think it just, it addresses it, it just allows it, allows the commission to determine, give them an opportunity to. give them an opportunity to talk about it. But there is nothing in the, in the law that specifically like a felony conviction would keep someone from being a cop. That's not the case with the articles.
Okay, thank you.
You. Are you saying that a felony conviction will keep them from being a cop?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions on this one? Okay, thank you. I will go now to First Amendment assemblies. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Up next, foot pursuits. Anybody on this one? All right, head to handcuffing and restraints.
Again, as I ask these questions, now my understanding of the difference between procedure and training, it's just, again, asking questions that people might ask when they see these. But the question about handcuffing and restraints, what I'd want to know is what training is offered to officers as alternative restraint options in case of a non-threatening individual who falls under the category of suffering from mental, mental illness, or might be in a neurodivers population of the community, who, for whom, a type of restraint or regular restraint might be excessively traumatizing for them.
Right, so the use of handcuffs or other restraining devices normally is only one that an individual is, could do harm to themselves or someone else. In cases like that, there are two additional policies that address communication to persons with disabilities and emergency admissions, as well as part of the mental hygiene org is addressing that, 334 and 410. But overall, in cases, as we discussed, Commissioner, that the the restraining capability, maybe if the individual is compliant, they just sit on the sidewalk until we're able to get them to medical help, or in some cases, the mobile mental health person is alive in those cases. So I know one thing that is on, in discussion is whether or not the city may adopt an alternative to officer-involved situations involving mental health issues. At that point, I think a lot of it, we can incorporate differently, but that would still fall under some of the current policies under the admission. I mean, we rely on mental health now, and that is usually requested after the request of the officer to do that. But we have that mechanism in place to some degree already.
Okay, great, thank you. And that, you just addressed basically the second half of my question, which really most likely will be determined based on the task force presentation and process, the next steps. So, thank you. And that's all I have for this section.
All right. Anyone have any other questions on that? If not, we'll move to the next one. This one's immigration violations. Anyone have any questions? No?
Oh, mine are out of order, so I apologize for that, out of, out of their numerical stuff. So my question originally was in terms of an individual being tante hanged, especially if they don't speak English, how are their rights conveyed to them in terms of immigration rights? And that would be, my question was, is there a pamphlet? Is there a brochure? Is there access to somebody who can translate the interaction with them?
The short answer is yes. We have capability to address limited language or English issues. There is, again, a policy tied into this, policy 233, limited English proficiency services. We do have mechanisms in place in the cases of potential victims of crimes that may be apprehensive about talking to the police officers. We can reach out to crime victims. We do have, luckily, we have two bilingual Hispanic speaking officers here, as well as some other languages. It's not a problem to call you, Commissioner. They called me in on the scene where there was an old Italian man who didn't speak any English and had to translate. So and he was swinging a old fondant unit at the time, too. The, so, I mean, we have those mechanisms in place. At dispatch, we can use a language line. We have capability to reach out to the county as well. And there are officers that do utilize Google Translate on their smartphones as well when they get to the scenes. In most cases, if it's involving a high-profile or very traumatic violent crime, we bring the individuals down here and we'll have them invited to the field face to face. If we don't have that resource on the street.
Thank you.
My only question was in section 4310, where this report discussed where the aggregate data containing to personal identifiers and identifiers regarding the receipt of and response to ICE and CBP requests. And that data is, looks like it's made available to the Sitter Clerk's office, but I just wasn't aware of where the public could access it.
Yeah, we haven't had, since we've adopted the policy and we've spoken before that we just, we never had that within the police department. This is a formalized policy. But officers never, at least in my career, have ever asked anyone any type of immigration status ever. We always believe that that it's more important to find the criminal than anything else in here. And for us, we recognize that. It doesn't matter what status they are, are they reading, right? So keeping that in mind, we haven't reported any because there hasn't been any, anything to report. If that was the case, I would make arrangements through IT to somehow either put it on, I'd imagine the clerk would be able to put it on it, but most likely the city Kingston Police webpage would add it on there. Since there wasn't any reports to be put on it, we just left it out. So unless there's, if you feel that there's a need, that the commission feels that there's a need to actually put zeros in there, or just there aren't any, then we can do that as well. But that, that is the reason that there's nothing been placed, that nothing has been placed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Any? We'll move to the next one. All right. This is lactation breaks. Any questions on this one? All right.
See, this, that's just an example of putting the ones in there that just simply didn't exist before. That's why that one's, that one's on the list. It's something that was never, never addressed in prior policy.
It's good that we have. Off-duty law enforcement actions is what I've got next on our list here. Anyone have any questions on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
No, I was just asking. So what, what happens in the case when the officer is not on duty and there's an incident or something? How does that engage him or not supposed to engage him?
There's actually, I think, several factors. One is definitely safety. Safety of all persons involved, whether or not you're going to intervene. Another is, you know, geographical area of employment question. If you're in your jurisdiction or outside of your jurisdiction. And then, you know, lastly, it's kind of a balance of when the, when is intervention going, intervention or interdiction going to be helpful to the community or safety? Generally, it's going to come down to a safety issue. Most of our training is if you're off duty and you observe something that's not a safety issue, be a great, you know, trained observer, be a great witness, and, and get as much information as you can. You know, if it's maybe a larceny or theft, you can follow the person, call into headquarters, follow their car, that type of thing. The only time we're really advocating for intervention is if there's safety to the public at risk. Then, then we would expect some level of intervention. Again, provided that, you know, the right tools were in place. You know, we tell, we tell police officers all the time, if you're going to act in accordance with your duty when you're off duty, you have to consider the fact whether or not you have, you know, a radio to contact anybody, whether or not you have handcuffs to restrain them if necessary, whether you have on, you know, protective gear, should it be, you know, higher risk thing. So there are a lot of factors. We spend a considerable amount of time training on this particular issue.
Okay.
All right.
And then I just had a particular question. And again, it just seemed that it might seem like an obvious answer, but to me, when an officer, if they're, they're asked to restrain from handling incidents involving personal interests, including family members or neighbors, but in a circumstance, especially if we're having to review policies, in circumstance, if an officer is seeing a family member being in imminent danger, I would assume that we would be able to allow, if they had to intervene as an officer, that that wouldn't be a policy violation. Because from the language, it looks like it's saying that they would have to refrain from, from intervening in that circumstance.
And I think Lexipol is pretty cautious with their, with their language. As we go through the policy, you'll see should, shall, must, will, those, those are pretty strong words when it comes to policy. And I believe this one, I don't have it right in front of me, I believe it was should not, which is that, that's that, you know, when applicable or when practicable would not, but certainly if safety was, was a consideration, then, then they would be allowed to respond.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll go on next to officer-involved shootings and death. Anyone have any questions? Policy. Okay. We'll move on to the next one.
I do have a comment on that policy.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, you know, I was reading it, and as it talked about, it wasn't until it got to the clause about perspective that I kind of felt, you know, I weighed this against like incidences that we have seen already, such as like George Floyd, and you know, that clause about perspective kind of makes it very difficult. There's, there's a part in there that says another officer can intervene. But it also then goes and says like, you know, you have to take into account that you may not have, that another officer may be holding more information about the, about the situation than you. So therefore, now we're taking into account, you know, one officer's perspective over another. So, so just looking at like George Floyd, for instance, you, you'd say, if I don't, if I'm an officer on the scene and I don't intervene, you know, and someone else is, is using what I think is excessive force, you know, and then I say, well, maybe that officer is holding more information than I'm holding, in which they think it's necessary to use that excessive force. I think it's just a lot going on in that policy. And then that particular clause kind of, you know, doesn't hold in anyone accountable in the event that excessive force is being used.
Commissioner, could you appoint me to which, which section number? I'm trying to scroll through quick so I can read which part we're talking about.
Uh, 300.2.2.
So that would be the use of force policy she's talking about.
Oh, are we not on that?
No, we're on the officer-involved shooting.
Sorry.
I was speed reading the best I could to try to catch up.
I actually did a control after, tried to find perspective in there to see where it was, but.
Sorry. Yeah.
I have a question on that, though.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, so now for the chief and Mike on page three of that, 305.54. And there's a few spots like that. Given the current city charter and the role of the police commission, and I know these are somewhat, some of the language is standard for New York State. I think there's places where, in this case, notification, if there's an officer-involved shooting, the commission certainly should be listed on that list.
I think with, with regard to policy, and I don't disagree, sir, I think the commission will certainly would be. But with regard to policy, this is really meant to guide the people that are at work. And I think we would have the on-duty sergeant contacting the commission, right? That would be the duties of the, the chief of police or or absence to deputy chief. So that's, that's probably why it's absent, because we wouldn't want the, the on-duty sergeant using this to guide him through the situation to make that phone call to you.
Good answer. Gotcha. Okay. And so then we'd be in a procedure, then, somewhere in the procedural module.
Or under, under the duties of the chief of police.
Okay.
And in this case, you know, not only would, you know, outside agency investigators, you know, most likely this individual wouldn't be contacting, say, the New York State Attorney General's office, but if there was an officer-involved shooting, they may choose to, you know, get involved. And so that's really up to the chief to, you know, be responsive and, you know, make those connections, you know, with the district attorney as well.
Um, I think this is the one that talks about the psychotherapist. Psychotherapy. And so with that, I have a question about like, if someone is, has seen a psychotherapist or has a you know, visits, I guess, has a visit or an evaluation or is offered this, these services. I just feel something like maybe a person who is involved in a shooting should continue to see a psychotherapist until, you know, like the investigation is over, or, you know, there's a verdict on their behavior. I don't think that they should just see one, you know, one time, or if they feel it necessary, or be able to decline.
Yeah, from from our perspective, that's up to the psychiatrist, psychologists to make that determination on how much more they're going to need. I can tell you from a counseling perspective, and firsthand, we did have an officer involved in a shooting. It happened uptown, in the city back in 2015. And that officer underwent counseling over the course of many months, even during the grand jury proceedings, that found him justified in that use of force.
And so just to be, so it's clear, so officers, you know, shall or have to be provided, you know, with this. And then in order to return to duty, they need to be able to get clearance from their psychotherapist, saying that they are able to go back to work. And again, separate procedure from here, I do believe that we probably have procedures related to, you know, not necessarily being able to go back to work until the investigation's completed, right?
Well, in most cases, the commission would decide to put them on administrative leave for the duration of the investigation. So normally, and historically, not just all agencies, but historically, the members that law enforcement are involved in this have been out until there has been ruling by the grand jury. Either they come back in very limited capacity, just to keep them involved, which began with some recommendations that the council is involved, to keep them involved in it. But in most cases, until the grand jury has, has made a decision on that, then they're left out of great control function.
Thanks, Chief.
Does the commission also make the decision then on paid or unpaid leave, or is that, um, you know, is, is that part of the policy? Or should be in the policy?
Well, if you're talking specifically about a suspension or a violation, that's how you can do the paid or unpaid leave. If it's an administrative leave or administrative assignment and not punitive or disciplinary in any way, then, then it would not fall within this guideline.
Anyone have any other questions on this one? All right. So I think up next, at least on my list here, I had the portable audio and video recorders. And this is basically the, the body camera policy.
And this is basically the, the body camera policy. Not hearing anything on this one.
Just a quick question on this one. So on the last of who can look at the record, review of the recorded media files? Again, I know this is a policy, but shouldn't the recorded files also be noted that can, will, can be viewed by the commission? Looking to see where it is. Page, the very end of it, chief, page four. Recorded files may also be reviewed and it lists people. And that one, even though this is a policy, I would think should say, I'm sure most state people don't have the commissions like we currently have. Yeah, we, we just, whenever the commission adopted this policy, this is the actual, I don't think we've changed anything on this one, right, Mike? Since it was put in place, but there's no reason why it can't be. Again, I think that overall the commission has access to all of this, including those records. At any point, it doesn't specifically say that, but we can add that if necessary. Or maybe it's in another one, as you say, somewhere else that relates to all these policies that the commission is able to do X, Y, Z, whatever. But this is relatively new, the recorded files. So I don't personally remember us, I mean, looking at this one before, quite honestly, and saying that, because I think we would have, like you said, we know that we do, we do view them, have viewed them. So I don't, you know.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with adding a bullet point there. I have a, a meeting with her Thursday, tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. The program manager and I are meet, so I don't, you know, I'll, I'll tell them what we're looking for and I really don't see an issue with adding, adding a bullet point to that.
This was also one of the, of the three policies, possibly two. This one and the right to know, is reviewed by the commission. The union, one of the union attorneys came in to speak on the union's behalf as far as some of the concerns they had. But this was during the initial first phase, test phase of the adoption of the body cam, we had this policy in place. And this is ultimately, but yeah, it can be added, absolutely.
All right. Up next, we've got recruitment and selection. All right, hearing no comments on this one, we'll go ahead and we'll move to the next one.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, I was saying the current policy is that you don't have to live in the city of Kingston to be a police officer, correct?
State, that's state law, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, state law says that police and firefighters have to just live within a contiguous county of the jurisdiction. So for, you know, us, that's, you know, green, Sullivan, orange. So they have a really wide, I think they, Duchess, I think, right? Yeah. And so we are, uh, we're, that's a very unique, you police and fire, all other municipal employees have to live within 10 miles of the jurisdiction and that's civil service law. And so that is one of the things that I know that there's been a push on the state level to change that, to require residency or require closer residency. But we, unfortunately, we're not allowed to have a more strict local policy that we're aware of.
Yeah, it's actually addressed in one thousand dot four selection process, letter L. Location of residence must be within most of county or an adjoining county. And that is directly out of service, service law. And again, here, so self policing ourselves and the commission, as we have taken an active role in some of the recruitment and stuff and initiatives. I also question whether, it says administrative lieutenant should employ comprehensive recruitment. I just question whether we should put the onus on ourselves and future commission members that the commission itself should take the comprehensive recruitment efforts, blah, blah, blah. I think, I personally feel we should be mentioned there and also in the selection process. Since we are doing the hiring, I know that's again to our charter, but I don't know if we have a separate, is there a hiring procedure, written hiring procedure, chief? That maybe we could see if there is one. Because somewhere along the line, it should coordinate with the, with the charter again. And since the commission is actively involved in one thousand point three recruitment and one thousand point four selection. I just question whether there's a role for us to, I think it should be mentioned there because we do want to self police the commission as well to make sure the commission is actively undertaking these same protocols. Well, I think part of it too is that this is really, these policies are designed for the department members, not so much for the commission that oversees the department by creating the own policy. So we could add that, I think, and specifically the person responsible for setting up the job fairs is going to be the administrative lieutenant. That has always been the capacity given a administrative training situation. I don't know if it's necessary to actually include the commission on it since they kind of have the umbrella above this policy, but. Yeah, and probably more appropriate to be somewhere else, but I think we should have, there should be a hiring procedure that we see that kind of polices ourselves, right? So it would hold us to those same standards that you're holding the administrative lieutenant to. Yeah, we can, we can add that in there, that it would the commission and/or the representatives or something like that, right? I think Mike did work out the wording on that, to put that in there. And I had just a question on the last one, or not the last one, on the one thousand point five point three, the review of social media sites, what can and can't we do? Because I see at one point, it's almost looking at the, we're protecting the rights of the candidate, but then we also want to be concerned with protecting the rights of the community to do that background. So it looked a little confusing when I was reading it. What, what exactly can and can't we do when it comes to the candidate, looking into the social media activity of the candidate? Right, go ahead.
It's, it's, it's designed to encourage us to see what they're putting out there publicly. I, I think we are, we are certainly permitted to, if they have anything posted, that's, it's fair game. It's public. I'm aware of certain agencies and I don't know the legality of it, so I don't want to say that we can or can't, that will have candidates come in and like log into their account and then tell the person to walk away and let them dig around. I think that that's too intrusive where they're looking at, you know, PM, you know, private messages, direct messages, stuff like that. I think that's beyond the scope of what we're permitted to do merely for employment. But I think certainly anything that that's posted, that the public could see, that we should be encouraging them to look at that. That's really what that's designed for.
Yeah, my understanding internally is a background investigator, one of our background investigators don't require them to log into their Facebook account when they come down here. It really is a public snapshot, review of anything that they post publicly on there. We do not require them, and I, I know where lieutenant's going. I know organizations or agencies out there that will say, okay, kid, log into your phone, give me your phone, all right, step outside. And at that point, it's, it's on that, but we do not do that here.
All right. Any other questions on this one? Okay. Up next is the right to know act. I'll see.
Okay, so my question, and this was answered and addressed in terms of the right to know when business cards or identification and name, rank, band number are given, as well as how comments may be submitted by somebody who's been in a stop. My question was what kind of information is on the card and basically that's who to contact, how to contact the commission, what numbers to call if you have follow up or comments or you have a complaint in a stop, that will be on the card for the person when they've been at the end of the stop. And that's all I have for that.
All right, so the, the business cards issued for the department members. Essentially, these are the ones that have been approved, have at the bottom, tell us how we're doing. Email comments to police commissioners at kingston-ny.gov, the police department address, the phone number, the badge number of the officer, the first and last name, and it also on the backside of that clause, it's in Spanish as well.
I, I think it's just a note, it's good to see, I, I do think some folks in the public do use it. I think some of our more recent emails have actually been, you know, with members of the public who believe that they're actually communicating directly with the officer that they interacted with. And so I'm assuming, chief, you're forwarding those to the appropriate officer.
Yeah, sometimes it involves a criminal matter or a victim statement. So, yeah, we sent it right along.
Great. But it's good to see that the cards are working for that purpose, so. So up next is the standards of conduct.
All right, so I, my question was just, and again, it's just, it's probably an obvious answer, but it would just, it just, it's the way it's worded seems a little bit odd to me in terms of, thankfully it's here, but in what section, three twenty point five point three, discrimination, oppression or favoritism, one of the restrictions is unwelcome solicitation of personal or sexual relationship while on duty or through the use of one's official capacity. I, I mean, shouldn't that also include off duty?
So when it comes to duty conduct, that should start to cross over into potential criminal behavior and that would be addressed from the district attorney's office. Or I think it should happen in a given jurisdiction that's reported, that jurisdiction you take down as well. The, this manual is really to put in place restrictions within officers while they're earning on duty capacity. Address it overall that they represent the department even off hours, certainly in that case. As far as, I don't know if it was our discussion about off duty protections when it comes to union engagement as well, but that is not the case. There's off duty conduct, an officer does not have any union protection unless they're, unless they're acting in the capacity of an officer has been addressed before in that case. So should an officer engage in conduct that is criminal in nature? The union has no say until the commission then acts on that as a violation somewhere, as conduct and become whatever the, the violation of that of that policy would be, and then the union can step in to protect that member that is in the department. Then that's anything that happened, you know, using the example where we had an officer essentially have a motor vehicle accident as a result of drunk driving. When that officer was, was brought, they were handled on the criminal end and then the commission moved for dismissal as well. And I think at that point, the union attaches an effort to protect that member as a member of this department, but not during the criminal proceeding.
Yeah, this is, this is really designed to be more restrictive on the conduct. So once somebody's off duty, they're subject to all of the criminal, civil and any other liabilities that everybody else is. And then it also says if you're off, if you're off duty and you're acting within your capacity, then you're also subject to this. So I, you know, I don't, if anything, it's a more, it offers more opportunity for disciplinary measures than, than the opposite.
Thank you.
Anyone have anyone else, anything else on this one? All right, I guess we'll go on next to temporary custody of adults.
And again, this follows under procedure, but my question was especially in policy section nine hundred point five point six, under religious accommodation. Are, for instance, individuals who wear head coverings, are they informed of their rights about whether they're, that they're actually, the right is acknowledged that somebody with head covering should not have to take off their head covering in front of a male officer. And my question was how, how is this informed? How are they informed of their rights in that circumstance?
Well, I don't believe that there's an obligation on the part of the officer to talk about what rights they have to wear. During training, our officers undergo an awareness training, really when it comes to situations like this where if you are either religious sex or there's situations where there's certain, and I'll say cultural situations where individuals shouldn't touch someone or shouldn't touch their hair, couldn't remove the headgear. The officers are made aware of that. And at that point, if there's any objections whatsoever, usually the supervisor is asked to weigh in on that. A lot of it that we talked about before may not be specified directly in the policy, but we suggest either in the training capacity, which is more likely than not in a procedural situation.
Thank you. That covers it for me.
Anyone else on this one? All right, we'll move on to the temporary custody of juveniles is what I've got up next here.
So my question would be about, because there is a section in nine oh, section nine oh one point one point one regarding if there's detainment of a juvenile who has a parent or has sustained abuse or has shown signs of abuse, is there mental health counseling offered while they're in detainment?
So in addition to what's been somewhat adjusted here with temporary custody, we also have a policy directly related to child abuse. And at that point, officers can turn to that in two thirteen. I can tell you, even without them reading this, the officer who trained to automatically contact CPS child protective services, should they ever come across in a situation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hearing nothing else on this one, we'll move to the next one.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I see a lot of, so this policy is still being drafted? I mean, I'm just looking at how it's written. I mean, I guess they're all still being drafted, but this one looks really.
So, um, that was a mistake, I suppose, on my part. As I download these things through the KMS, there's an expert, export with comments, export without comments feature. And most of them I printed out the way that they will appear in the policy. So you could see them. When you see this one with all these comments, this is the back and forth between the program manager and I. This is how we communicated through the course of the week. She would tag something, I would tag something, we'd comment back and forth. And, and quite honestly, this one, I just hit print the wrong way when I printed it to PDF.
Um, so just in terms of language, when it says, you know, about adolescent offender, a juvenile delinquent, seventeen years of age, who is in custody for a felony, should it be like alleged felony?
So this language in the definition section is straight out of New York State law. So we're just taking the law, we're, we're not creating our own definitions. We're using the law. And that's why if you see like in your version, there's all these comments with the blue, pink and the updates. While we were in the midst of drafting and recreating these policies, we had two legislative changes with regard to raise the age. So this policy, actually, there was three evolutions of it, just in the time we tried to, to get the policy out. But the, the specific language in the definitions are taken right from the New York State Family Court law and the criminal procedure law.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this one? If not, we'll move to the next one, which is use of force.
I'm sorry, which one are we on?
I think use of force.
This is the one, Shanika, were you with the questions on?
Right, the, the question about the perspective. I think it was four hundred point two.
Yeah, I think I see it there, three hundred point two point two.
Thank you. Thank you. Basically, I was just saying that it seems like this policy is written fairly well until you get to that particular clause, which then kind of negates anybody's, you know, fault at what's, what's happening in the situation. So that's where I just have an issue.
I mean, I can speak in general terms when it comes to perspective. Just positioning can, within, let's say, a vehicle stop, we have two officers, one approaches driver's side, the other approaches the passenger's side. Just the mere perspective and the ability to see things differently is going to raise issues within the plan of a particular use of force. The driver's side may be up there engaging, the passenger, the, the secondary officer on the passenger's side may see through the back window, the individual has a gun in their hand, or the driver may not. Now that the passenger's side officer engages, the driver has no idea what just happened. All he hears is guns and shots, and, and at that point, may determine that he wasn't in a position to even make that determination, that deadly, deadly physical force is necessary. So I don't know if that's a better explanation, or maybe it's too simple, I don't know, I'm sorry. But if you look at that from, from just the perspective aspect, in officers' positioning themselves, and I think, you know, we can see that sometimes with body cam versus dash cam, that the dash cam may have a different perspective. And should that be an officer that's arriving, or someone that's already on the scene, there may be that, that component. But officers are, are trained to make the determination to use force based upon what they know. And that may not always be in line with what another officer.
Yeah, and I think that, that, that's kind of Shanika's point, if I could, is that when it reads, it, it sort of makes it seem as though we, you know, obviously, we know that when, anytime there's a use of force, we get special, you know, write-ups from each officer involved. And, you know, we get it from that officer's perspective. And I think when you read the policy under perspective, though, it makes it seem as though, at least the way it's worded, that officers should be, you know, careful with what they write because they may not be seeing the whole situation.
I, I think, if I could offer, I think this is not, this part of the policy isn't for guidance for writing your report so much as guidance for response when you're at a call. So it covers the duty to intercede, which is certainly an important aspect of it. I think the perspective piece is added there because there's going to be time in practical application that there's the second or third or fourth officer may not have seen what the other officer had seen prior to. So for instance, if I were to come upon the scene and I saw two people engaged in criminal activity, and I wanted them both arrested, but I could only arrest one of them, and the other person was leaving the scene, and I told the other officer, hey, you need to grab him and arrest him. And he didn't see it, then he's, he's got a, he's got a, the fellow officer rule has to take into account. But it also puts it back on me. If, if I was incorrect, and that initial decision to make the arrest wasn't substantiated by probable cause, the, the liability is on me for making that call and telling him that. And the liability is not on the person that relied on me saying, hey, that person needs to be arrested. And I think that's really what this is designed for, is that guidance during the moment, not so much the investigative component. If that offers any.
Mike, we're specifically talking about use of force.
Yes.
So in the example you had, you know, it's, yeah, it's common sense. If you say, hey, go get, go get this guy too. But if someone arrives on the scene and, and sees someone using what in their mind is excessive force. What Shanika were talking about is the perspective, and, and be honest with me, I'm surprised. It almost, not that it's, it might sound wrong, but it's almost like you're giving an out because, okay, the paragraph above says you need to intercede because you're seeing something you don't necessarily think is necessary. But then it says, well, use your perspective, maybe the guy that got there before you. I think I hear where you're going, but it doesn't read that way. And, and I'm a little surprised it doesn't have some sort of language about failure to act. Because if, if the, it says up top, the officer has to act, but what if he doesn't act? Right? I mean, there's gotta be, it's kind of like what we're all hearing about, and what we're all trying to eliminate. It just, you, I would think you would not only not offer 302.2 as, as an out, but you would step up 300.2.1 and say the officer has a duty and a failure to act would bring on disciplinary action.
Well, I think that the 2.1, because it's in there, not doing it is already a violation of policy. If the policy says you have to do it, then, then you have to do it. If the policy says you can't drive 100 miles an hour, and you don't necessarily need to add the sanction to it, then if they violate the duty to act, I think we would have the ability to act upon a violation of not following their duty. With regard to 2.2, I got a note here, that'll be the first thing that I talked to Lexipol about tomorrow, to find out clarification on the language. And, and if there's a particular reason that it's embedded right there at the point of, you know, with the duty to intercede. That'll be a good question to her.
A good question for Nally, right? He's going to be the, the expert on, especially with the use of force reference in there.
I just think it'll be helpful. I mean, I, I think that, you know, I understand, you know, I read it as reporting, you know, use of force. And I think that if that, that's, I think, really the issue, because you know that we want our officers to give us as unbiased reporting as possible, know of what happens during these use of force incidents. And, you know, this, the, the type of language used there is just what I think is getting them. So if you could talk to them about that, and, you know, we'll have our next commission meeting, you know, we could bring this, want this policy back up again. I mean, obviously, as we all know that, you know, these policies that exist here in the police department, like we will, should, and will continue to review all of these, all of them. That's our role. And so as state law changes, as local policies change, you know, as, as we, you know, learn and grow as a department, you know, the goal is that these are all living documents. And so just because we, you know, we, we can always continue to come back to these, so.
And, and Mike, you know, if you, if you change the word or to and, and that, it may read the way you want it to, or if you remove the word observing. So if it said, when reporting force, as opposed to observing or, or if it said, when observing and reporting force, then as the mayor says, then it would actually read towards reporting only. It's leaving that word observing in there with the word or that creates the conflict with the paragraph above.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm pretty certain that, you know, given the the attention to use of force generally across the nation right now, Lexipol has looked at this as well. So I'm gonna, definitely talk with them about it.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else on this one?
I just have one last thing on the last page, use of force analysis. Do we do that yet, or is this something new? Says at least annually, deputy chief would prepare an analysis report on use of force?
We don't do it currently.
Okay.
It's something that would be taken on. I mean, right now, the commission gets everything, right? Of course, they get, as long as it falls within the guidelines, so.
And I think it's also going to work in conjunction with the, the new legislative mandates by DCJS to report all use of force to them. So that'll, in and of itself, that, that monthly reporting will create the database as the, you know, as the start point anyhow. So that'll be pretty easy to accomplish.
Great.
And that's a pretty big part of the task force presentation that kind of came out of the whole process is, is us being able to translate that data into the, like, well, either the current commission webpage or an actual website that get created specifically for that information.
Great. Anyone have anything else on this one?
I think it's worth just bringing up again, that I had brought up in the last meeting, that in terms of adhering to Campaign Zero's recommendations for the policy, that the use of force policy, with the exception of the shooting at moving vehicles, pretty much strike, basically, has been, has covered all of the requests that they're asking police departments to adjust their policy to. And then I, we can address the, the shooting at moving vehicles issue, which is Campaign Zero and their eight can't wait, which was the use of force. And reducing use of force incidences with civilians, basically, that they had specifically just asked that that be banned, ever, shooting at vehicles should be banned completely. And that's staying in the policy. And that was a question I had asked Chief, but that's also in another, the moving vehicles has its own policy section. So I was going to wait for that part of the question. But I do think it's worth just bringing up that Campaign Zero's recommendations have been taken into account for the use of force policy here again.
It could too, Commissioner. I'll, I'll send it to the chief, to you folks. When eight can't wait, when I was looking into that for the task force, I had reached out directly to Lexipol as well. And again, this is what they do across the nation. And they had given me a, like a letter of response to the Lexipol policy specific to the eight can't wait. So I'll pass that through the chief to the commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that if I've done this correctly on here, I think the vehicle pursuit is the last one for us to review tonight. And so I do, I can hear many saying that the, the one part of the policy, while the rest of our policies match the eight can't wait guidelines, the part about us and our shooting at the vehicles that may not, or does not, you know, align with their, their, you know, stance on the issue, is that correct?
Yeah, they'd ask for that to be banned from the policy completely.
And do you guys know if there's anything in kind of our accreditation standards or, or any other jurisdictions that have taken a look at that policy? I mean, obviously, we know that it doesn't happen often in Kingston, wherever at this point, but what is the, you know, is that something we could take a look at?
I personally think, you know, in our review of it, you can't, now, I guess I'll explain it the best I can. You can say as a commission that officers are not going to ever shoot at a moving car. You can say, is it going to happen? Hopefully, never. But can it? Yes. If an officer is found in a position where that vehicle is coming at them with no ability to get out of their way, and the only thing they can do is stop that driver through the use of force through a firearm, they're going to employ it. The commission then decides they violated the policy, but on a criminal end, it's going to go in front of a grand jury to decide whether that use of force is justified. Because it doesn't matter if you're swinging a bat, a gun, a knife, a brick, it's still got the potential for deadly physical force. And a car, you could run somebody over with a patrol car, and again, considered, is it, is it something that could be justified? It could be. So those are the considerations on that, to absolutely say you can never, I think it would be something within the purview of the commission. I don't think it's something that should be there. It's clear, for me, it states officers should not utilize firearms during an ongoing pursuit unless the conditions are authorized to use, authorizing the use of deadly force. And I know there's a lot of considerations during the training, we address a lot of this as far as reckless and isn't necessary, is it reasonable? And all that applies no matter what the situation is, whether it's a vehicle, whether it's an active shooter responsible, a school, whether it's out in the open parking lot. You can't say that a subject will never shoot in the direction of the bad guy. That's going to happen. But the officer has to take into consideration, what's the backstop? Is there a potential that one of the rounds may miss and then go into a school, into a window of the school? So those are the considerations. I don't, I really don't feel that. And again, if the commission decides to say, no, it's not going to happen, I believe that at that point, if an officer finds himself, either I'm going to get hit by a car, or I'm going to shoot the driver, you're going to shoot the driver and take their consequences in court of law. So we can look up and see accreditation. I'm not aware of any agency that has absolutely said you can't do it. I think all of them placed it within the, the use of force as deadly physical force when it rises to that level. But I, I know another, no other agency that I've ever assessed that has shown that to be an absolute, Mike, I don't know if you.
Yeah, I'd say the same thing. In, in all the assessments that I've done and policy reviews I've done, I've, I've yet to find one that absolutely bans it. But I think there's a, there's an important distinction that needs to be made whether, you know, we say shooting at a moving vehicle or shooting at a very specific, you know, lethal target that's inside of the moving vehicle, right? So whether they're in a car, or a classroom, or a hallway, or a playground, you know, I think the distinction is that it's the, the person that's the threat and not the, not the vehicle. We wouldn't just shoot at a car, it would have to be very specific. And I think it is very, a very small window that it is to occur. And I think the policy is pretty strong in that, you know, and I'm looking at what we have in here. And it says it should only discharge a firearm at a moving, moving vehicle or its occupants when the officer reasonably believes there are no other reasonable means available to avert the imminent threat of the vehicle, or if deadly force other than the vehicle directed at the officer. So I think we put in there that this is a last resort, right? The language is pretty clear that it has to be a last resort. I can say from a practical matter, like having, spending as long as I did as a SWAT team commander and as many critical incidents that I've reviewed, there are applications across the country where it has been necessary. And, and, you know, not to get too much into procedural stuff, but, you know, hostage taker has people in the car, are we going to, you know, let him leave because he made it to the car? Or there was an incident in Dallas where they brought in a special team, they ended up having to shoot the engine block of a car to disable it because if they didn't, you know, the car was going to put many more people in the public at risk. So those are really small, like rarely happen things, but that, that's where I think that a lot of people shy away from the categorical banning of if the vehicle's moving, there, there's no way to use deadly physical force against it.
Actually, Mike, to your point, it says using the firearm to stop a suspect from using a vehicle. So it actually does say you're not shooting at the vehicle, you're shooting the suspect, shooting at the suspect in the vehicle. Some of the recent terrorist activities where people have used motor vehicles and trucks as weapons, I don't think anybody would say they're not, someone should not use a firearm to stop them from causing harm to pedestrians or innocent bystanders. At least that's my opinion.
And I'm not aware, honestly, of a, of a scenario that it's ever happened. I mean, certainly not in our department, but even locally, I'm, I'm not aware of any, any scenario in, in my time doing this.
Anyone have any other questions?
I'd like to thank them both. It was great to know, to see your familiarity. And obviously, you guys put a lot of work into this. It was nice to, you seem to know the, know the answer to every one of our questions. Appreciate the time you put into it.
We've been doing this a long time, Commissioner. And, and, you know, when Mike talks about assessments, and we both, as we came up through the ranks, took on the role of program manager with the accreditation program here. We're both New York State assessors. Mike, I dare say you've done more assessments in different jurisdictions than I have, but well over 12 or 15, right? I can say that usually these things are onsite, we review policy, and it benefits us as much as it's work on our end, and it's done on a personal time basis. We don't do it as part of our responsibilities here. And we get hired essentially as a contractor, like DCJS, to go out and do assessments. Usually, it's a single or three-day program. We bring back so much information that we try to incorporate within our own department. Sometimes it's great, you know, I had, this is many years ago, I was shocked to see that the law enforcement accreditation program required a policy on warning shot. And by all the accreditation standards I've ever seen, all the policies I've reviewed, people say you can't do warning shots. There's no exception. But I came across an agency many years ago that allowed it. And when there was some hesitation, and I'll call the assessors on the scene to say, wait a minute, this can't be right. We called the state and the state said, never said they can't do warning shots, it just says there has to be a policy on warning shots. But I just can't imagine that in a situation where you're going to shoot one up in the air to scare somebody. So, I mean, it's unbelievable. But, but we have quite a few years under our belt. I'll, I'll say you've done more assessments, Mike. I, I think that that's the case. We were hitting them pretty hard for a long time. So, and I think that plays into a lot of this, is, is that part of it. And then when you can rely on someone's professionalism that Mike Nally has, and he has, Mike has, he's not talking about it, but we have a great relationship with Mike Nally and have for many years. Here is really a guy who dedicated his entire life. He's a lawyer, he's specific to certain circumstances, he's the chief, he knows it all. And now, in his retirement, he is doing this Lexipol assignment, which is speaking volumes about his ability to keep moving forward.
This is a great exercise for us too, though. It really is great dialogue.
And I think the one thing that I appreciate about the Lexipol is that, you know, as you know, there are, as I think you guys said before, there's 126 policies or something along those lines that cover the work that the. policies or something along those lines that cover the work that the police officers do. And I think, you know, to be able to have that monthly refresher course where, you know, they're asked questions about our policies and state policies and all of the guidelines. And I just to kind of remind folks, you know, we all could use that in our jobs. And so to be able to have it done, you know, easily and, you know, kind of you guys can then keep track of and better understand, you know, if there are areas of training that need to be done based on how people are doing on on these monthly, you know, assignments, if you will. And so I think that that's, you know, long term, this was a very expensive endeavor for the department to undertake. But I do think that it was, you know, it is very beneficial for for the, you know, the training of our officers and moving forward. So anyone else have anything that they'd like to add tonight?
Yeah, I was just going to ask a quick question. I wrote down, Mike was talking about the daily training bulletins. That's for the officers themselves?
Correct, sir. They're they're going to have, we're going to pick twenty out every month, and they're going to have to log in and respond to those those bulletins. And, you know, at the end of the month, if we found that they didn't get all twenty done, then I have to contact their sergeant and make sure that they get them done. But that's a, it's going to be a monthly task. It also is going to keep them in the system, in the policy system regularly, which is the added benefit, not just quizzing them on their, you know, their knowledge, but keeping them in there and and being active in the in the system itself.
All right. Because that was, that was going to be my next question. How, who is going to make sure that they keep up with this? And you you already answered that. Thank you.
Anyone have anything else?
Uh, one other question.
Go ahead, Shaniqua.
Sorry, I'll be brief. I just wanted to know, like, what category, like, I saw the lactation breaks, and I wanted to know what category does, like, family leave or FMLA, like, policies like that, where 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 do those, are those policies already in effect somewhere and and they have nothing to do with? I'm just trying to figure out, like, what policies get are in this Lexipol and what policies aren't.
I'll get you a whole list, but it does, it does address some of those concerns. Most of the things with regard to Family Medical Leave Act and things like that, it it's just going to refer you back to the civil service law and the cities, you know, what the city is bound by, not specific to the department. And same thing with like the social media policy, for example. We have a citywide social media policy, and it'll basically say in our policy that it'll be in accordance with the policy, and one of those blue hyperlinks will exist to bring them right to the city's social media policy. Same thing with, you know, like, Family Medical Leave Act.
All right. Anyone else? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn for tonight. I appreciate everybody's time and for doing the question meeting.
One question, we're going to do for the, and Minya, thank you for your work on that public safety task force. We got that report, which is pretty comprehensive. Are we going to have a special meeting to review the contents of it as well? Or what's the plan for that?
So I think that, you know, I encourage folks to have a have a read if you haven't read it yet. And you know, the common council is now going to go through their process, you know, and by basically the end of March, it needs to be adopted so that it can be, you know, sent to the governor's office and ratified in that regard. And then at that point, you know, it will be up to us to work with the common council to, you know, plan our our next steps. As you, as you all know, we put a hundred thousand dollars in the 2021 budget to be able to, you know, to move forward on some initiatives that are are in there. And so, you know, I hope that our commission will be will be able to help prioritize with the common council. You know, that that, what to do and and which of the of the projects to to move forward. There really are a variety of short, medium, and long term goals, you know, one of the ones that are going to take a little bit longer is one, say, related to the police commission and expanding our membership. That's going to require a charter change. And, you know, there's a pretty lengthy process, you know, where others, where, you know, investing in, you know, additional mental health, you know, resources to be able to better respond. You know, that could be something that could be more straightforward. You know, hiring, you know, additional, you know, mental health staff to work with us. So that's a, you know, again, it's got to be a, it's kind of a joint dialogue between us and the common council. And I hope that they'll look to us for advice and direction as we move forward. But for now, you know, I think we've got to just give them a little bit of time as as the community to just kind of digest it all. And but I expect this spring, you know, and we'll be able to start, you know, moving forward.
It may be helpful to have Rita, Anthony, and possibly Lester at our next regularly scheduled meeting, just to give us an overview. Lester could just give us a heads up and how this thing was put together, what the plan was, how they mapped it out. And then Rita could tell us, I don't know what, if it's going to her task force or just the general council. But we could kind of at least hear from them what what the plan is and kind of make our plan according.
Yes. And I think that, you know, there will be one last process meeting with the Lester related to the task force in February. And, you know, I, maybe we'll be able to encourage some of our police commission members to attend that meeting. Maybe that could be helpful for everyone. So. All right.
Mayor, do you want us to approve? I assume you also want a motion to approve these policies with the amended changes that we spoke about?
Well, so these are, most of these are existing policies in some way, shape, or form. And I don't know if we actually need.
If we're amending them, we certainly think we need to approve them.
Yeah.
So I think part of it is that if we're going to do an approval basis, I think the commission has to go through every policy at that point.
Yeah.
Because even if there were small word changes, the if, Mike points out, shall, would, whatever. I think these are the ones that are the main focus. And I believe as, I my belief is as long as they've been reviewed by the commission, these are fluid, right? As the mayor mentioned before, they can certainly change. Something changes internally, that that the task force comes up with something that says this should be aired, we can make that change as well. You know, at one point, how many are we up to, Mike, as far as policy totals? If we would have them review and approve all of them?
I believe it's one one fifty six.
Chief, I'm specifically talking about the ones we went through tonight. And I would think is that the commission is responsible for for adopting and implementing the policies and procedures for the charter. I would think if we would, if we made it, even if you did change it, we're I mean, that's standard on on most boards. When we look through policies, the governing body approves any changes, and we could list the policy numbers that we went through tonight. But I think it I don't I don't see how they become official if they're not enacted by the governing body.
Yeah, I mean, again, I I'm that that's what works with everyone. You know, I don't, if I remember correctly, going through the policies tonight, there were, you know, the amendments were related to adding the police commission. I I know that Mike took notes. So I mean, I I'd happy to, if we'd like to approve the policies as amended. There is still the question on on the use of force based on this perspective conversation and that we will get back to us all on at our next meeting. But I am fine with that if that's what, you know, folks feel comfortable with. And I would say that then with the spreadsheet that Mike sends to us all, you know, that lists all of the rest of the kind of more, you know, mundane policies that we have. I think if there's any that the commission members have specific questions on, you know, those could be shared and we could, you know, review those. But I I guess then maybe at our next meeting, we should just adopt all of our policies. So we can, I I what makes me uncomfortable is just doing it for for twelve or thirteen or fourteen, I don't, fourteen of them, and not doing it for the other hundred and thirty. So I guess we should probably just.
Well, if they're new, if they're new, we would need to do them. If they're unchanged, then you, if there's no change in their existing policies, then I assume they've already been approved at some point in the past.
I think the issue is, is that because of getting them all, like, Mike mentioned before, many of our policies, you know, maybe there it was policy ten before, but in Lexipol, it's now policy one point six, two point four, and three point three. And so the question is, even if the the general sense of the document is the same, it it they're all different now. So really, even if we may have just changed the the or an and or an it, we also change the policy numbers. And so in essence, we really will have to just approve all of them. Because all of our policies got changed into this Lexipol format. So I guess to be, to to, I think.
I think we should. I think we should. And I think the commission should review them all and look at them and make sure we have this go through the same exercise so we're all familiar with it.
Yeah.
I mean, this was healthy. I I think this was really healthy that everybody read through these and and familiarizes ourselves with them.
That's fine. So I guess before we end, then do we have a a motion to approve them as amended? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Great. So thank you all. Thanks for bringing that up, Brad. And so what we'll do is we'll get the rest of the policies that and we'll get them out to folks. So getting, it's a good timing for us to get this all taken care of. So I I have a willingness to do this. All right, I guess I'll have a motion.
I'll give you a motion.
All right. You made a second in by. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Have a great night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Good night.